... We're calling the meeting to order. Roll call, uh, we have a day's meeting absent tonight. David's not here right now, but he's coming. The additions to the agenda?
Um, the only addition is really a product.
Okay, uh, number one in product.
Yep.
And number one in product to the agenda. With that addition, I would remain on the ballot.
So, on the ballot.
Second to vote. Any further discussion? Hearing not all those that pay for the same high?
Aye.
All say aye. Motion carries. District 741 is proud of Ainsley America Legion and Alex Hiller for their donation of apples to Ainsley area's school staff during American Education Week. Ainsley area's school school board for the truth of recognition of American Education Week. Nick Digman, grade 10, and Derek Mudwick, grade 11, for being named honorable mention in football for West Central Conference Fall of 2012. Senior Nathan Meyer, grade 12, for his 6,000 year commercial mark in season in the Fall of 2012. Kristoff Kristotten, grade 11, for setting his score in the five home record numbers in season for the Fall of 2012. Marissa Wickham, grade 11, for being named all conference volleyball for the West Central Conference Fall of 2012. Junior Sam Dahl, in state equated, for being named honorable mention in volleyball for the West Central Conference Fall of 2012. Senior Nathan Meyer, at the buyer, Caleb Burrows, and Anthony Johnson for being named all conference football for the Central Conference Fall of 2012. Senior Nathan Meyer, at the buyer, Caleb Burrows, and Anthony Johnson for being named all conference football for the Central Conference Fall of 2012. John Riley, Midwest Central Sports Board, for great contributions and great football grades. And Nathan Meyer, grade Fall for being named the West Central Tribune and only our first team in football for the Fall of 2012. Moving on to public comment, Darrell.
Okay, my public comments tonight are going to be relative to a confession of judgment, and I have three points in particular that I'd like to make. Uh, and the first one is, the confession of judgment filed by the Pinkwell School Board for the JCI settlement payout did not meet the statute, statutory requirements for doing the confession of judgment. So, you know, as a result of that, the school board has misuse of legal process and the confession of judgment, and I've given you some handouts. And, uh, it is, as far as not meeting the statutory requirements, I've got a copy of what the statute actually is. Uh, and I have yelled, um, the pertinent points, and this confession judgment statute is a judgment for money due. And, you know, what I'm pointing out is that we did not, uh, meet the legal requirements for using this judgment. And I also, in the middle, I have it, and you can follow along, the judgment be for money due. Uh, okay, there, there's two things, uh, that you have to do, and it says in the statute that the writing shall state concisely. Okay, I've got it. Number one, the facts of which the debt arose, and two, and this is what you did not do, uh, and show that the sum confessed is justly due. And, and, uh, going back to the June 12th school board meeting, you know, I requested that each school board member, uh, answer the question whether they believe that the $295,000 amount paid, they said was enough, that it's actually owed. And there wasn't one school board member that was willing to say yes. And, uh, I don't know that there's anybody that was on the facility to any way that, uh, you know, this kind of payment was justly due. Uh, okay, next, I want you to go to the, the actual confession judgment that you did. And I have points highlighted, uh, and at the top, okay, school district 741 hereby confesses its obligation to pay a debt owed to Johnson and Pross. Okay, that's one, you're, you're confessing, you're not showing that it's justly due. And if you read on the bottom of the page where it's yellow and it says, Depter acknowledges that the sum of $295,000 is justly due, again, you haven't shown that it was justly due. Uh, and, you know, as, as I stated, I, I have not, uh, I, I don't think there's a single person on the school board that believes it's justly due. You know, I've heard comments from a few, and at your school board meeting, you talked about potential $8 million liability, which wasn't a possibility, and, and then at your closed meeting, you made an argument that, well, if you didn't settle, you'd have to hire likely a $500 an hour attorney and have $175,000 of legal expenses. You know, none of that's got anything to do with whether this, uh, debt was justly due to JCI. So, so that's, you know, point number one.
Okay, we're running five minutes, get a little bit of that.
Well, this is just slightly important.
That's our policy, so it's statutory.
I, I've been here when you extended it for coming up.
Okay.
Um, I wrote a letter to the editor, and, uh, you know, the school board member who was here that responded, uh, you know, one of his response was Mr. Larson, first of all, you know, he's, uh, saying there's a legal agreement called a confession of judgment. And, and a point I'd like to make is that with this statute, it is not relevant to a confession of judgment agreement. It, it's purely a judgment for money due. And it doesn't talk about, you know, when JCI is going to get paid or you're going to pay them pretty thick my sack. And then it goes on to, to say, and I, I think this, uh, might be a point of confusion for everybody on the board, he, he says, as to why the school board, why would the school board get a judgment against the Pinkwell School District? I think Mr. Larson is confused at what took place. The school board did not give a judgment against the Pinkwell School District. Okay? Uh, you know, you go to the second page on the confession of judgment, and Depter agrees and authorizes that the court administrator shall enter judgment against the Depter class confession. So, so it is a school board that's seeking and authorizing, uh, a judgment against the Pinkwell School District. And I can also say, uh, as far as, uh, JCI, uh, you know, why, why would a creditor who, uh, is getting paid immediately need a judgment? And, and then I, uh, late, like, just got in on the point.
Okay, Darrell, we've had, uh, it's been eight minutes, and, uh, we will respond to your comments in the next board meeting.
Well, Dave, Dave didn't.
Well, we can repeat it, so. We're going to move on, um, to prove and correct the minutes through the number 27 Move. This is actually move. I want you to move to the second remark. Any further discussion? Hearing not all those that pay for the same high? Aye. All say aye. Okay, we've got a moment to move to the discussion agenda. Number one of the business, we have Steve Pumper here from PMA, and he's going to lead us to the taxation information for the taxes payable in 2013.
Hey, Mr. Chair of Board Members, Superintendent, community members who are here, Steve Pumper with AM Financial. One of the requirements for every school in the district in the state of Minnesota is to uphold the truth in taxation hearing, and your board is doing that tonight, and I'm going to walk you through that as we, as we go through it. So, Mr. Superintendent, go ahead and say. The process for putting together a levy actually starts back in June. So, in June of 2012, district administration was providing information to the department, the Minnesota Department of Education. And in August, um, the district notified the county to set the date and location of the levy hearing, which is tonight here at High School. In September, the board took action to certify a proposed levy, and that was a dollar amount at that point in time that did not include, um, the referendum that was voted on in November. So, the dollar amount that was sent to the county back in September was, was a lesser amount than actually will be certified tonight. In November, as you well know, the community voted on a referendum, and, um, also in November, you receive, uh, tax notices from the county as well, indicating here's what proposed increase or decrease or, um, levy would look like from the school district as well as from your county and city. Then tonight, we're here at a public hearing, and then on the board agenda, the, the board will be certifying the final levy tonight as well. The requirements we hold for the taxation hearing is you need to present the current school year budget, you need to present the proposed tax levy, including the percentage changes from, from year over year, and then public comment must be allowed during the meeting for the public to comment on the tax budget going forward. So, when we look at the 2013 budget, um, school districts throughout the state of Minnesota are required to segregate their funds, and they have a, a general fund, which is the largest fund within a school district. It includes transportation, capital expenditures, includes all your costs associated with education. You have a food service fund, um, community service fund, some just districts have a building construction fund, this district doesn't at this point in time, a debt service fund, and a trust fund. Then when we look at the budget, um, for 2013, you'll notice that the general fund has revenues of $9,540,000 and expenditures of $9,338,000. So, that's a deficit budget of roughly $283,000. Um, last year, the district, as, as Roddick came in, had a deficit budget, or a deficit actual, of $457,000. So, you'll see that as the boards approve the budget, they're making progress towards the board towards a breaking budget. The, oh, I'm sorry, that's okay. The food service budget, um, is, is close to a balanced budget, the community service budget has a slight surplus, and the debt service, um, um, budget is a, is a slight surplus as well. So, you have a total, um, budget of $10,800,000 and expenditures of just over $11 million. If we look at the revenues and see, um, how do all the revenues get allocated by fund? You'll notice that the general fund, again, all your transportation, all of your educational expenditures, 83% of all your dollars go toward the general fund. 5% of your revenues go to the food service fund, 4% to the community service fund, 8% to your debt service fund, and your trust fund being only 1,700 doesn't even register as a percent. If we look at where does the money come from, 73% of all the money the district receives comes from the state. 17% comes from the local property taxicard, so that's everyone in this room and others. Um, the district receives 4% from the federal government and 6% from, from other types of revenues. A lot of those would be from, um, athletic fees or admission fees, um, local, local efforts that way. Then when we turn over to the expenditures, um, again, makes sense that the majority expenditures are in your general fund, so 84% of all the dollars the district collects goes towards, um, the general fund. Um, 8% is for debt service, for bonds that you have due or payable. Food service fund, 5%, community service fund, 3%, and again, a trust fund doesn't register as a percentage. When we look at where does the money go within the general fund, you'll notice that 40% goes direct towards the classroom, elementary and secondary, and regular instruction. If I just walk around the circle, 2% goes to vocational ed, 14% goes to special education, 3% is spent on community ed, 4% on instructional support services, 13% on pupil support services, 90% on your buildings and grounds, 8% on your fiscal and other fixed cost programs, and that would normally be debt. And administration receives 5%, and district support services is 2%. Now let's examine the proposed levy that the school district, the board will take action on tonight. It's broken up into three different categories. The first category, again, is called the general fund, so the, again, the biggest piece of the pie. And if we look at the levy that happened in 2012, so this is the actual amount, the total general fund levy was $868,180. If we look at what's on the table tonight, the proposed levy for taxes payable in 2013, that jumps up to $1,274,290, so an increase of $406,000 or 47% in the general fund. It's easy to see, and as you all know, the, the district went for a vote on an increase in referendum, and you'll notice that that is the most significant change. So, you have a, almost a $267,000 increase, um, in the general fund, directly tied to the positive vote on the referendum. The other large increase on here is for your, for your health and safety of $128,000, and where last year was only $41,000, and that's to, um, pay for projects that have happened within the district to recover the costs that are, that are levy eligible by the state of Minnesota.
And I do believe that that was our, our me and their kitchen renovation, I believe, with the, the windows and stuff that were put in there.
And the way that the health and safety program works then is that the district actually spent those dollars, put in the goods in the kitchen, and so the state allows you to, um, collect revenue post, um, in fact, to reimburse yourself for the payments that already been made. So, we go to the second fund, which is the community service fund, and you'll notice that this was pretty much flat. Um, it's a 5% increase, and it's all due to adjustments from prior year. Last year, you actually had a decrease, a negative adjustment in your community fund of $2,000. This year, you're, it sounded scratched, $285,000, so that's what your difference is. And adjustments normally take place, um, due to enrollment. It can be due to, um, tax levies being collected, abatements, things such as that. Um, so, community ed is pretty much a, the, the same levy as it was from the, from last year. And we go to our third part of the tax levy, and that's your debt service fund. This is for all your principal and interests that the district holds on any outstanding bonds. Now, the one thing to point out in this is you'll notice that your, your principal and interest from year to year, that's again, almost identical, a change of $672,000. Uh, you do have some facility bonds, and that's very, very slight increase of $3,000. But your big adjustment here, which is helping taxpayers in this given, um, year, is a debt excess adjustment of $139,000. And what that means is the state actually requires the district to levy 105%, so 5% more than, uh, what they owe on principal and interest from any year from, um, year on year, and that's to actually help the cash flow for a district to be able to make those debt service payments, and it also makes up for any uncollected, um, taxes from people who are delinquent on their taxes. And so what the state does is, is they run you through a calculation, and they say, you can only have so much extra in your debt service fund. And if you have more than that 5% of that amount, it's been accumulating it up over time, we are going to take that away from you and give it back to the taxpayers, which is the right thing to do. And this year, you have a calculation that, um, you have $139,000, too much money in your debt service fund, so we're going to, from past year's collection, so we're going to give that back to the taxpayers. So, um, that has a, a good effect on your tax rate for this year, um, but that's not necessarily something that will continue to happen from year to year. So, then we add all those three categories together, um, you'll notice that you have a total levy of $1,815,036 from last year. This year's proposed levy is $2,087,996, an increase of $272,960 or a 15% increase. So, if, if I get caught up in one of my notes here. The, the, um, referendum levy increase, um, 266,000 or almost 267,000, um, was for the referendum. The total levy increased by $273,000, and so you'll notice that when you net everything out together, almost the entire increase is due to the referendum. Um, and, and so, everything net of all the other levy components is relatively flat. So, when you look at the tax impact, um, the majority of anybody's taxes that are going to increase is going to be due to the successful passage of the referendum. And this was what was put out back here in May, May 17th, 2012, during your levy, levy campaign, of what the potential impact would be on any given, um, property value within the district, and, um, if the, the referendum was successful. And so, again, if you have a $150,000, um, home, you could see that the impact for the passing of the levy, which is pretty much what ended up happening, would be a $97 increase, so that's what you could expect. The one thing that I would mention is that there's certainly other things that can impact your own personal tax statement as well. For instance, if your, your house was valued at $150,000 last year, and this year you have a valuation that went to $160,000, you will pay a higher level of tax because of that. And conversely, if you had a $150,000 valuation, um, and it went down to $140,000, that will have an impact as well, the district's taking action on. The other piece that I always like to mention is that when you look at your tax statement, you're going to have several components on that. The school district is just one of the entities that is taxing on property taxes. You are going to have an impact from your city, and you're going to have an impact from your county, and you may have an impact from special taxing districts as well. Lastly, I'd like to point out that, um, the state of Minnesota provides potential for tax relief for people who own houses or have rental units. Um, you can download those forms and instructions if you go to the, um, website that's listed there, um, the Department of Revenue and Area Support. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Okay, thank you to you. And, uh, as he related, we are, um, required to provide a public comment as it relates to his presentation, so we'll open that now for everybody.
When you're talking about 2013, are you talking about the tax levy for the school year of 2013, 14?
Um, good question. Uh, we're talking about taxes that will be levied in calendar year 2013, and those taxes are used for the school year 13, 14. So, it really will be used for the school year that starts July 1st of 2013.
Yep. Can I roll you back to a chart?
Sure.
There was a chart up there that had $800,000, and then it went to a million, too. I didn't get that. Maybe everybody else caught it. Um, and let's see, go on. That one.
Okay, so this, remember, there's three components of, of this? So, if you had 868,180, or, or was it a million, two right here? Is that the same?
Yeah. And then it says the actual levy table in 2012.
Yep, was data 16.
Is that the difference between our, the levy we just passed? Is that what our differences are?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I don't have to understand the entire question. This is the first category, which is the general fund component. So, the actual levy that you made in the general fund component for 2012 was 868,000. The actual levy that the board will take action on tonight for the general fund component is $1,274,000, but if you go to the, the end, Bob, two more slides of proof. The total, going back up one more, the total levy that you'll be certifying in that, all three categories, is $2,087,000, and last year's was $1,815,000.
Okay, so that's the levies altogether.
Right.
But I thought when we wrapped this levy, none of those are in that component right there, the one we're talking about that we just passed. But I thought that was supposed to bring our district somewhere around $800,000.
Well, this is just the, okay, good, good question. This is just the portion that you're going to collect from the taxpayers for your, your referendum. Part of your referendum, part of that successful vote, will increase your state aid as well. And so, this is not the total revenue you're going to receive because of the referendum, this is the total amount that you'll collect for your taxpayers for the referendum.
So, if we told our taxpayers we were going to likely collect about 800 and whatever, like $65,000, we're really going to collect about $1,200,000? Is that what you're saying?
No. You, 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 when you were talking about your referendum, the only thing you were talking about was this line right up here, okay? And so, I don't know what you, what you told the taxpayers, what the total dollar amount was.
You can go to that chart on the tax impact.
Oh, okay. If you want to go to that one, thanks, Joe. No, you're up there, you're right there.
821 is right there in the middle there.
Okay, so 8, 821,000.
Mm-hmm, that's 8 and lucky.
Yep, so, so, so here's a good thing for you to understand then. If the total amount that you're going to collect is $821,000 for the total district, now go back up. Right there. $636,000 of that's coming from the local taxpayers, so the difference between that 800 and 636 is from state aid. Does that make sense?
And I think that would be right, who's on, on the sheet that we got.
Okay, I got you. I just couldn't follow that one though.
Darrell?
Where is the $130,000 tax money that's going to be payable to taxpayers in 2013 due to a confession of judgment levy?
Sorry, the confession of judgment, it's $129,997.
Dick?
But isn't it even more confusing, because you're talking about a calendar year, but school is talking July to June?
Yeah, but that's just the way the.
Right, but I mean, that, that makes it more complicated to understand.
Sure. And it's, and it, I mean, I don't know the entire rationale for it, but, but cities and counties, their fiscal year is the same as a calendar year, and everyone levies at the same point in time. So, the school districts really want to kind of suffer as far as the timing part goes.
And maybe, I don't know, maybe you would know the answer, maybe somebody else would. Do you know if we'll continue to look at the estimated market value versus the taxable market value like we were misled from May until November or, or October when higher? Any idea? I mean, that, that was, that was beyond belief to me, but, you know, I guess nobody else in the state of Minnesota asked the question, so I decided I would. You guys don't even.
I think there's definitely not much of a difference between estimated market value and taxable market value.
What's that?
There's usually not too much of a difference between estimated market value and taxable market value.
Yeah, I was also told by your firm that it wouldn't affect that many people.
Right.
And I, right? No, there, there's probably 20, or 30, or 50, or 100 times more people with a home under $400,000 here, here, than above 400, or whatever that limit is where it's not going to affect them. You know, I guess, I guess all, all I would like to see is the correct information, you know? But when you put it out there, repeat it, and repeat it is wrong since May, and then ask me what you should do to correct it, you know, it's kind of, kind of late in late October to correct something that's been out there since May.
Yeah, he's talking about the tax, or the, the, on that tax impact chart that we had before. Um, no, but, but. Taxable market value, that's what the county uses, how it, how they changed their language.
Hold it to the end. The way she.
Yeah.
There it is.
Sorry, yeah. So, taxable market value is the language that the county used for years, and how they changed, like, to specifically call it estimated market value, and we hadn't updated that word on the slide.
But to say, to say it doesn't mean that much of a difference. I mean, that's, that's a relative term. Who are you talking to? A person with a $385,000 home or the person with a $80,000?
And when you went on your website, we definitely made sure that people were putting in their estimated market value, so the tax impact was calculated correctly.
I think the best way to explain that to people is to not include the market value exclusion when figuring the property tax value. I don't know, just an idea. And again, this, uh, the homestead exclusion, um, it's relatively new, actually, it, it came from the legislature in, what, 2011, the special session? Uh, so, I, I get the understa, you know, the misunderstanding that people may have, but I think if we get all on the same page, so we're calling it the same thing or referring it in the same way, do not count market value exclusions. Businesses, uh, farms also, it's not called a market value exclusion, I'm sorry, I can't recall what the term is. Agricultural credit, can I refer to it as that? Um, it would be before that. All referendums are based on the higher value, uh, and do not consider the, the credits. Make sense? Makes sense?
No, please, hold on, no. It's okay. But they were only off by, you know, quite a few millions of dollars from the tax.
No, nothing's off from the tax impact.
No, on the website, I agree. I don't, I think that was done correctly. But all the sheets like that that got, that I know that our superintendent even used, the language has been incorrect.
And soon as we fought over it, you changed it.
Yeah.
You know that. Right, but you can't, can't completely redistribute the hundreds that were out there, you know? I just, it, maybe, maybe it isn't a big deal. I expected more from a firm that you guys are paying good money to, you know? Why, why should Joe Idiot have to find something like that? I'm referring to me, not anybody else.
Okay.
To clarify. Okay. I'm done, I think, hopefully.
Hey, is anybody else from the public on the public comment?
A question?
Yep.
As far as our district's responsibility to pay this judgment, are we done paying this judgment as taxpayers?
Two years, I think, is, is all of those centers. Eleven to most be paid each year. Again, July, the two years. 2012 was shown and 2013 with the final end.
Okay. Another question. In the event of a future judgment, can that be levied upon us as taxpayers at any time?
Judgments, I believe, can be levied. I, I, we have to clarify that with the attorney, but I believe that that's...
Judgments can. There are certain qualifying notes I can get.
Okay. If there is nothing else on that, I would...
One more question.
Okay.
This is truth in taxation. Have you heard about the truth in budget process? I guess I was asking Steve Pumper.
Um, no. Just question, truth in budget.
Good question. I was just reading about it on the Stearns County website tonight. I'm going, really? Is this a new process that the state came up with? I mean, as important as a budget is, I understand that this, the truth in taxation has been around for quite a few years. But when I heard about truth in budget process, that's going to be a whole new set of requirements for reporting. Wouldn't you agree?
I haven't heard of it.
If it's true, I mean, if it's, if it applies.
Anything else?
Okay. If not, we're going to take any motion to procure approval of the final 2012 table 2013 letter certification. Motion to mark.
Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, how was the papers, have the same eye? All the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, number three, in the business review the results of the bond sale of the general obligation eight anticipation certificates. And we've got Joey from Elers Associates to give us some information on that.
Do you want to come down here or?
You, just fine, right there.
So if you'll turn to the first page of your report, yesterday's all bids on the eight anticipations certificate that's out loud. And the district is issuing a little bit less than they did the year before, partly because the referendum provided a little bit more money and help with the cash flow. So the amount of the issuance is 1,825,000 dollars and provide funds to be deferred expenses and recover cash flow deficit for the district. These weren't rated. We thought that the cost of the rating would not offset the additional savings you might have received from the interest savings. But we did allow the purchaser to, to pay for the rating if they wanted to and they chose not to, which is very common. So you'll see that you received two bids. A little bidder was Jeffrey's Company out of New York. If you turn to the last page of the bid table, you'll see the nice little rate that they offered. Jeffrey's Company was a low bid and at interest rate of .3904. This is significantly lower than last year even. So last year, we were happy about the rate and that was at .4858. So this year, again, quite a bit lower. Piper Jeffrey had a bid of .4966, which again was a great bid. But Jeffrey's Company is the one that the board chair, then its superintendent, approved yesterday as part of this process. When you guys passed your resolution on November 13th, you gave them the authority to move forward with accepting the proposal, assuming that the rate came in less than 1.25%, which was well under that. And one other item to point out on this page, the net interest cost under the district this year will be $5,483.11. That's the second column from the right. Last year, your cost was $9,383. There's a few reasons why the cost will be quite a bit less. One is that you're issuing less. We talked about that. The interest rate is lower. And then the term is just slightly less than last year. Last year, we closed in November. This year, we're closing in December. So you're about a month less in terms of the term. So then if you turn back to the summary of results, again, you'll see the debt interest cost of 0.3904. The difference between the interest savings between the low bid and high bid at $1,491. And again, this rate is quite a bit lower than last year and certainly well, well more than the primer that was established. We'll close on December 20th and that's when you'll have your cash. I know you're expecting some cash flow deficits in January, so you'll have your money in time. And has the resolution gave your board chair and superintendent the authority to accept the proposal? That's done. There's no additional action that the board needs to take tonight. And if that's all I have.
And two, if we have any further questions, Joey? She made fair, you have the resolution already. I've got it all, so, uh, any other questions?
Okay.
Number one to personnel. Number one, do you consider approval of resignation of Mary Lyne Decker? Ted Carroll's law school which entered November 14, 2012. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing now, how was the papers, have the same eye? All the same sign. Motion carries. On to informational reports. Lori.
Okay. Uh, we had a busy calendar, uh, the last couple of weeks. As you know, we, our choir performed down in Florida at the candlelight performance and did a phenomenal job and really upheld our Pinsville name down there as they performed at Epcot in front of about 5,000 people. So it was a real incredible experience. We had our middle school choir concert last night. Our PLCs are continuing to meet this month, working on our Common Core standards and starting to look at the alignment and putting them into student-friendly terms. Then we are also going to be having college discussions with our junior class later this month, where we invite about 10 graduates in at different times within their college career. And they come back and talk to our juniors about their experience. We try to spread it out between students that have been in the military, students that have gone to four-year colleges, students that have gone into career and technical programs and give our students, our juniors looking forward into starting college visits some information of what they should, you know, be asking and what they should be looking for in regards to their plans for their careers. So it's a, students have come back and said they really appreciated the experience to do that. Students are also signing up for the ASVAB, which we'll be giving in January. Over, was it two weeks ago now? We have conferences, both in the middle school and high school. They weren't doing very well. We had continual call of parents coming in. Our middle school continues to do the student-led conferences. And high school conferences are still more arena-style where parents can come and go that are unscheduled. And with that, during that same week, we did offer the explore test for the first time. The explore test is a pre-ACT test that we gave to our eighth graders and it also has a career exploration component to it. And so I'm kind of excited to get those back. We should have the results back in January. And depending on, we had a good turnout for that. It was optional for our students this year. I'm looking at having all the eighth graders take it next year and then maybe actually offering what they call the plan test to our 10th graders. And what ACT has said is that the, the one that eighth graders take is basically about 60% of what the actual ACT is that they would take as seventh or 12th graders. And then the 10th grade one is about 60 to 75% and then moving forward. So it would give our students a chance to kind of practice that ACT and kind of see if they are en route to doing and to performing well on their ACT. And if they are, great. If not, we can look at focusing on areas we want to help them improve on before they take it as seventh graders. So we're kind of starting that process. And the state does pay for that test. So it's a free, free opportunity for our students. So I'm excited about that. Any questions that you might have for myself or what's going on here in the secondary building? Okay, I am going to sneak out to relieve Max from the ballgame and he'll be right back.
Okay. Is, uh...
I'm gonna need it. And Matt is six, so...
Okay. All right, so Max will be, next thing, we should come back to him.
He gets ready to do that, yeah. Just, I'm starting to put work sessions on the, on the agenda. I'll continue to do that. I can start with, with what we talked about. We had two work sessions since the last board meeting. One of those work sessions really got this, was both referendum and now that the referendum has passed, what process are we going to look at as far as what are we going to use the dollars for? Whether it goes to reserve funds? Whether we have any projects? With the discussion with the board, I think at this point, administration is going to at least cost out some things and bring some recommendations back to the board. The board eventually will have to decide on percentage that we're going to use for anything other than putting into reserve funds. So that was the, the main part of those discussions that we had was really what are we going to do? And in the end, it was decided that we would come up with some recommendations on things that we thought would really be appropriate for that. And again, I think we'll have to talk about percentage. Certainly during the discussion, we talked about putting, building up our reserve fund, which we, I think we all agreed that we need to do. I think the question still lies about how much we're going to build it up and whether we're going to use those dollars for any other projects. So we'll have another work session to, to finish that off and have more discussion about it. The second work session really was with the negotiations committee. And that dealt with the fact that we still have a number of people that we need to negotiate with yet this year. Their contracts are out. That would be our principals, our community head director, our billions, headed billions of grounds, who are missing Max, their AD also.
And Jim.
And Jim. Yep. And Jim is our technology guru. So we, we need to finish with him. And that was all the discussion. And at this point, after that discussion, I'm starting to collect information from other districts and also collect proposals from them on where they want to start negotiations. So those are really the two work sessions that we had. The other thing I'm going to try to do is get some notes up on our website that talk a little bit about the work sessions. So anybody that wants to read those can do that.
Uh, do you want to continue with your end report?
Yeah, I, we just had a board meeting last week. So there really isn't a lot. One more bus. I also accompanied some teachers, in fact, two more buses. Also accompanied some teachers to look at PIP, which is the Public Employee Insurance Program for Healthcare. And we got quite a bit of information that's starting to come up again. So we're going to start looking at that whole particular piece as far as what the best deal for the employee is because really, the district contributes so much. So if we are able to get lower rates for the employees, it's a good benefit for them. So I accompanied a group of teachers there. We, I learned a lot and a lot, an awful lot about that particular insurance program. I think that'd be about it for me.
Okay. We will, we just have Max.
And also, I, one other piece while waiting for Max on, the high school also had their blood drive. Went phenomenally well. I managed to get blood without faking, so that was a good thing for me. But I saw, when I went in to donate blood, there were just students all over the place willing to donate to a good cause. I thought that was very good. In regards to the explore and plan test, for the eighth grade explorer test, there is a correlation that the board is aware of. If they do well on that test, about being college-ready. So I do believe that both those tests are good things for us to look at. And I think if we give it to everybody, I think we'll gather good information for the district. I think they're good things. And at least right now, for the last number of years, the state has provided those tests for you and won't charge. So it's a good thing. Oh, yes, that's the other thing I was going to mention while we were waiting here. We also went to the legislative forum last night. There were about, oh, I'd say 30 to 35 board members and superintendents that listened to a few of our local representatives. It was interesting. They were unwilling to commit additional dollars to, to fund education. But very good discussion, I thought. I, I thought it went very well. I know you were there also and that you attended. I thought it went very well.
It was disappointing that we just had the three Republicans there opposed to no Democrats. And they seemed to, well, they made the comment, one of the legislators made the comment that they're just kind of along for the ride. And I would like to see the drivers there so that they had some discussion.
Well, I, you know, I think it's all our responsibility. You know, I, I think they can say that they're along for the ride, but I would say it's all the legislature's responsibility to do a good job at that, so... And in fairness, this is the first time And, and in fairness, this is the first time in the superintendents we've talked about doing something like this. It's the first year. And our hope is, is that we'll continue to have that legislative forum and get more legislators to show up and even more board members and maybe open it to community too. Because I thought the discussion was very good. Also, for the equity dollars, it was a good discussion from the C group that were there. And I think that that would be a nice thing to bring in C and do a presentation with the board so that our community can also see that, that presentation. I think they bring up good facts. We await for you.
All right, Max, you can finish your meeting.
Since the last meeting, we've obviously started the winter sports and such and gathering data and actually just got the last of it back today from our conference schools. Again, just to compare, remember, at participation numbers in accordance with our conference schools. And we also did, as you remember, we were hired to call the names of the schools. We had a West Central Conference meeting, administrative meeting, and Bob was able to attend that. There was a big discussion item on webcasting and what, what school policies, what conference policies are going to be as far as that. It's certainly something that, as technology advances, is probably not going to go away. There's some concern as far as if visiting schools are going to come in and do webcasting. Are they going to be also then trying to come into our community and our businesses to raise money for advertising and things like that for their programs and for services that their community is providing and not really offering any benefits per se to, trying to catch my breath, that are in down here from bringing an official to the middle school locker. But not offering a lot of benefits to our community due to the fact that it wouldn't be a consistent basis for our community to be able to know that there's webcasting services or these events are going to be on because they'd be so infrequent versus if it was something that our district was doing and it was a program for our district and then our businesses were choosing to advertise or something on there to be supporting of the Painsville school. So that is something that area athletic directors are meeting together to try and discuss and come up with what policies certain schools are going to do. And it's a policy that I think that our district is going to have to look at to see what is going to be our guidelines or our requirements if another school is going to want to come in and webcast one of our contests. Certainly it would affect, potentially to affect the, or attendance and things like that. Those are big things also. It is now, as far as the Minnesota State High School League is concerned, for all coaches, assistant coaches at the varsity level are now required to take the coaching statutes that all the head coaches had to for last year. That's been determined that, and I kind of updated you on that, but they determined that is going to have to happen now. And so all of our varsity level assistants are going to have to go through extra stuff. It's just extra stuff to track and to make sure that we're in compliance with the state high school league rules. There's not a lot of other change going on. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me. We just hosted our first basketball game, girls. They won tonight, and our boys play on Thursday. And wrestling is on Friday night. And we've had girls and boys hockey last week. So our underway gymnastics is on the 20th, which would be next week.
Okay. Thanks, Max. Is there anything else for the board to add?
Question?
Yes.
On the agenda, it said that you approved the, I'm thinking, is it this? This is 31 pages of something I really don't understand.
Maybe guys with Steve Pumper summarized it.
This is what you summarized?
Well, yeah, those are all the calculations. You're right, it's a thirty-some page of four.
Thirty-one pages.
Yeah, and those are all the calculations produced by the state that end up with the final number that you're certifying today.
Okay. Steve, can you do me a favor and summarize? You know that little summary, the PowerPoint thing?
Well, yeah, one time.
I know that we had to ask for it last year. Is there any way you can provide the district a copy or...
The district has it, so you can ask, you can go through the district.
Okay. Okay, because I'm sorry, I cannot understand 31 pages.
Pictures and colors are so much cooler, you know?
But this is what you certified in. Yes, okay.
And Kim, if you'd explain to me what you're looking for also.
The PowerPoint that, you know, that Steve and you did, the pages.
Oh, that...
Yeah, the truth in taxation.
Yeah, in fact, I'll put it on the website. Any reason why you wouldn't do that?
Great, thank, thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. ...